I will now. I will now open the city council meeting. And if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, city roll call, please.
Councilor Hughes.
Here.
Councilor Lippke.
Here.
Councilor McElroy.
Here.
Councilor Prokop.
Here.
Councilor Strobel.
Here.
Councilor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Dringthing.
Here, thank you. Uh, we are now at guest presentation and we have Merrick Stanton. Let's speak.
That is, it should be a little. All right, and I'd like to welcome Merrick. He's been working very hard on this project that he's going to share about. And it, um, I think it lines up well with one of the council goals of, um, identifying and implementing environmentally active, sustainable and responsible practices that will protect our natural resources and habitat. And so he's going to, um, share what he's been working on.
Next slide, please. Hello, my name is Max and currently I'm an Estacada resident. I am sixteen years old and a student of Summit Mountain Charter. Due to Summit, I'm also a student of the Cockamust Community College. I am a member of the Oregon Bee Atlas and I'm also a board member of the Washington Native Bee Society. And I am here today because of my love of nature. The previous quote I showed you is part of why I'm here, because I want to make an impact today and I want to make it to protect the things I love. Next slide, please. Okay. In seventh grade, I first came in to do, became introduced to bees. This is during the COVID nineteen period. So when I first learned about bees, it was just wonder and amazement, like wow, they have such a huge diversity. So they kind of literally every kind of the rainbow, they have a large range of life cycles from like the honeybees to how like solitary bees, they only have one parent. Um, and next slide, please. That's kind of a huge range of sizes. So this just shows the range that we have in Oregon and also the US overall. So we have around four thousand different species of bees in the US. About six to eight thousand is what we have in Oregon. In Estacada, I've documented around forty species, but this is likely an underestimate because it's only been in a burack and then the town area. Um, however, as I became more aware of bees, I also became aware of threats. Currently with how we're living, we have many threats with, towards bees. Next slide, please. These are just some of the ones we have currently and a lot of these can be found in our cities. One way that we can make a difference to protect the bees, which we do need in everyday life, is registering our city as a bee city USA. Okay, next slide, please. So. Bee City USA is a designation to the Zerse Society, which is a nonprofit working to document and also conserve insects and other invertebrates across USA and Canada. The registration is a representation that our city is actively working to enhance culinary habitat, decrease the use of pesticides and strengthen public awareness. Apart from just helping support pollinators, it also helps create possibly more community. It would be another achievement for our city and also improve our environmental health. Now, this would also help fulfill some of our city goals in the comprehensive plan, including the environmental quality and land use hazards, plus the forest goals. Okay, next slide, please. Fortunately, the steps to registration are fairly simple and they've been already laid out for us. I have already gathered the support of the Estacada Garden Club, the Estacada Library and also the Parks Recreation. I have formed a committee for this project made up of nine people total. And this committee would be in charge of the outreach and also in both creating and executing it. And myself, I would help test my abilities for the art section as well. Now, what I need from the city is to accept this project, to adopt the Bee City USA resolution, to be the sponsor of the project, which would be a minimum of one hundred dollars for registration, but also renewal every year. And then the cost of setting up a sign, which I don't currently know what the cost of setting up a sign is, but that would be fairly simple to figure out. And the final thing is creating a policy in the city plan that acknowledges the designation, enhances culinary habitat and also an integrated pest measurement plan. An integrated pest measurement plan is basically just reducing pesticides with alternatives or at least being more mindful about when and where we spray. It would not be completely ruling out pesticide usage and also not setting onto just banning it from us to Canada. Um, next slide, please. Now, I thank you for your turn of attention and if you have any questions, that would be the perfect time to ask them.
Great, thank you, Merrick. Um, any questions for Merrick on the B C? Paul?
Do you know of any other bee cities around Oregon or around Estacada in particular?
So the nearest, the closest one is Sandy. So it has Sandy's already registered bee city. We also have Hillsboro. Um, I want to say Eugene is one as well. Those are the ones I know in particular because I know people who are part of those boards who would also be willing to help support and give guidance of how to start a new city and those steps forward.
Any other question? Um, that, that bee that was the size of a quarter? Is that one in Estacadas?
No, fortunately it's not. So they're called carpenter bees and they're found in Barson, Oregon. So they're like the warm weather. So they're just barely in Oregon.
All right. Well, Merrick, I gotta tell you, I'm on board with this all the way. I think this is a great thing you're doing. I plant my yard that way. So I have a lot of bee flowers that bloom just after the others. So they have plenty of, um, places to get, uh, honey. So I'm really excited about that, but, uh, I think what you're doing is a great thing and I've been reading up on you and you've come a long ways and that license plate is pretty snazzy. So I think it's really exciting you're doing this and I hope everybody at the table here is on board with this. And I think they probably are. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna do your bee city. I hope you're excited.
Yes, I appreciate your time.
All right, do you want, do we need to vote on it?
Um, as long as there's consensus, we'll just bring back the resolution and then any other details that you're interested in. But we've already talked with other staff and it's a fairly light lift for staff because Merrick's done all the work and has his committee going and we'll keep, uh, keep that moving forward. So, um, yeah, we'll just bring, bring your resolution back to you.
Thank you, Merrick. It looks like we're going down that path and you're gonna have to come back now and keep this informed as we go along. All right?
Yes, I'll be of my best abilities to help with that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're at, uh, citizen and community group comments. I have three in front of me, so we'll start off with the first one here. We have, uh, Lizzie Lewis. Go ahead and step up to the mic there. Looks like you're talking on behalf of the lavender festival, is that right?
There is no lavender festival and that's the problem.
You're gonna give us one, right?
So we used to have a pretty big lavender festival in the Barton area and the, the first year we had it, it was announced on Good Day Oregon and we had twenty thousand people. We had a line of cars before the gates even opened for two miles. And the, the committee quit because, uh, their, their leader retired and there's this huge gap. And I know that we've got a lot of lavender farms around Estacada. And it would be great to have, I mean, we would love to have a bee education tent there. We have, um, I've even talked to a couple of the businesses on Broadway. Um, the brewery is on board. They said they would love to make a lavender lager, which was one of the main draws at the lavender festival. And I've talked to a few other artists and we really, really miss having the summer celebration because it was a huge thing for our community. And our community is expanding quite a lot. And I think that especially this year when there's a, this is the first year. Um, in a, I can't remember how many years the lavender festival is going because I'm nervous. But it's the first year and the last couple of years that we haven't had it. So there's this huge gap. There's going to be a lot of people that don't have that to go to. And I think that it would be an opportune time to funnel them here. And well, that's pretty much it.
Well, we appreciate that. Are there any questions for Lizzie on the lavender? Um, start down there, Mike.
When and where? When, when, when would you like that? When was it last year and where were you thinking about it happening now?
It's usually in mid to late June and I know that's coming up fairly soon and I believe it's forty-five days that we need a heads up to close down the, the street. And I wanted to kind of model it after our beloved summer celebration that we haven't had for a while. Um, the summer celebration went on for, I think, twenty years. And it was, it was a boom to the community.
Thank you.
Joel?
Um, my question is actually going to be towards Melanie here. Do you think the DEIC, the DEC could help maybe assist with this since they do things downtown and they're not doing the summer celebration? Maybe they can assist with it at all?
They, well, we could, we could definitely check with them on that and they could certainly help promote. Um, and the arts, there might be other committees that might want to get involved. The Arts Commission was the one that usually did the summer celebration. So there might be, uh, if, if there might be other groups that would like to participate or bring volunteers or help promote, um.
They might be good, especially if it can attract twenty thousand people to the city. It could be some pretty good, pretty good help. So.
I, I'm pretty excited about it. I, I've had the, uh, fun of actually being on the lavender farms during the season. We worked on the harvesters and putting signage on them. That, so it's kind of exciting and I love the smell. So, I mean, the more lavender, the better, right?
Exactly.
So I think this is something that, uh, should be pursued. So if you want to, you know, start the process and if we can help.
I'm looking for directions on how I, I have no idea what I'm doing. She said, come to, come to the city council meeting. I said, okay.
Uh, there you go. You're in it to win it now.
Okay.
If you can connect with Melanie, she can help point you to some committees.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I have Kim. On behalf of Walkers.
Hi. My name's Kim Thompson. I am here on behalf of Mark Engel and Dan Walker Disposal Service. Uh, to inform the city council, the mayor, the residents of Estacada, the community of Estacada. That Mark's mother Judith Walker passed away Friday morning. At eight fifty in her home with Mark beside her. She had been suffering a lot of illnesses over the last several weeks, but she passed peacefully. Uh. Her funeral services will be held at St. Elvish's Church, April nineteenth at eleven AM. Her burial will be in Verbor, where she grew up. And where her son, Mark's brother and her family are buried. That date has not been determined yet. Um, we should have that announced from Rob tomorrow. We will be posting it on the webpage and on the Facebook pages. But we wanted to assure the city and the community and the residents that. Although her passing was a giant hole, um, nothing changes except that Mark is now a hundred percent owner instead of fifty percent owner. And now he's taking care of things. Uh, office staff and the crew stay the same. Our new truck will be here in hopefully a few weeks. We are waiting to hear from. A. Loadmaster where it's currently being finished. Um, we'll be launching our fiftieth anniversary celebration with the city. This year is our fiftieth anniversary. Fifty years ago, that blond headed little boy walked into what's now River Mill Level entry and. Ultimately became the garbage man that everybody knows and loves in this town. So. We ask for, uh. Little Laniya to be closed the office for today, but, um, we are gathering things out of her home for her services and family is in and out. So. We may close the office to the public for another day or two, but we're assured they're still there working and the guys are still out picking up and servicing what they need to. But everything will be staying. Same as usual, except we want to. And we're working on a yard debris program, but not just citywide. I've been working with Josh Brown from Arrow. Waste management, the Forest Service and other entities to. We need a countywide yard debris program, not just a citywide yard debris program. And how does that picture and what does that look like? And we're going to be looking for citizen and having, we want some input and because it's a problem, it's an issue. But there's a lot of money out there that our city and our county and the other entities can collaborate. And maybe we put something together that's unique and we show the city, we show the county and the state and the federal government who's throwing money. At reducing wildfire mitigation and maybe we have a ton of timber up at Timothy Lake that's Forest Service that they need to get rid of and that could be donated to our community. So we are excited for. The changes that are coming, although we don't appreciate having to, the loss that we've had, that he's suffering. So. I just wanted to let you guys know and, um, we wanted to make a formal announcement and, um. We're also going to be doing some like recycle education days and pages and a little more outreach. Into the community, into the city. So, um, thank you for your time. Um, and, uh. Keep marking your prayers. He's, uh, it's a big loss for him and his family. So I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. If you have questions, let us know. But otherwise, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kim. Judy was, uh, quite a person. I've known her for years. She lets you know where you stood.
She certainly did. She was a chamber member. She was chamber council president. She sponsored a lot of, a lot of different programs and that's what Mark wants to continue. Um, because this is his home and, um. Everybody knows that one day is garbage day and all the little kids, the pictures of the little kids that we get. Um, it's, that fills his heart with joy because that is his legacy and it is Danny's legacy because. Danny was his stepdad and he gave that to Mark. That was always going to be Mark's, not his children, his stepsons. So. It's a legacy and it's Danny's legacy because his father before him was a garbage man and had a route. So Mark was on a garbage route when he was seven years old in Portland. So.
I've seen him for years.
Yep, he's been on, he's been at, he's, he, he's been driving, driving on the garbage route since before CDLs were required, since nineteen eighty-one. So a long, long, his whole life. So. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
So Mark, we, we are very sad about his loss and Judy will be very missed in this city.
She will. It's going to be a big unicorn gathering. I can tell you that. That's what it was about. But she, yeah, she was a dynamic person and a big holder fell, but he's, he's, um, he's doing as good as can be expected. He wanted to be here tonight, but he's making funeral arrangements. So.
Would be hard.
It's very hard.
He loved his mother very much and I can appreciate that.
Yeah, me too. So, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. Okay, next I have Michelle Jackson.
Yes, I was wondering about the water access that you're going to put on Lake Shore. How long is that going to take?
That's.
Where are we at?
I think.
I mean, I'm not getting any younger and I want to go fishing. Okay, I need to be walking. I need to look.
Go for that for our city manager.
I could just give you a brief update on that. We're going to have the, the plans for engine, the engineering and design. If that will be done this summer. But then it's just gathering the funding that will be needed to build it. So I would imagine it's going to be at least a couple more years. We'll start applying for grants. Um, but it could be, I would say, two to five years depending on the grant cycles and.
That's too long, doesn't it? You need it.
It's going to be very enjoyable.
Oh, I, I'm sure it is. I, I am sure it is. I've heard people on Facebook. They're like, oh my gosh, this is so terrible. Where is everyone going to park? Well, how many people can you put on a little dock? You know, it's not like a boat dock or anything like that. So my other question is, is there going to be stairs or anything to go down to it? I know like with that other, uh, dock that's behind the industrial area, uh, you have to walk down, you know, and, and I, I have a bad knees and. I have the rock over there by me too off of Lake Shore, but I can't get down to it either because of my bad knees and stuff like that. So.
Would be a part of that project.
That there'll, there'll be two ways down. There'll be one that's a path that's sloped like the other dock. So if people need to go not on stairs, they can go on a soft surface trail. And then there will be stairs also going down to a, like a, a platform. And probably if it's, if people really have trouble accessing difficult places to walk, that's probably as far as they'll get. But then there's a gang plank that will go down to the water. So in a, that could be. I don't know how steep it's going to be. It won't be ADA compliant, but we'll make it, you know, as, as.
Well, I'm not interested in slipping in the mud. So.
Yeah, so there's, there'll be stairs and a, and a trail and then it'll reach a place where you can walk down a gang point to the.
Great guy. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next we have the consent agenda. Uh, is there anything or any questions on the consent agenda? Before I, do I have, Joel?
Um, I just wanted to see if we could pull off, uh, the resolution for the fee schedule. I just had a quick thing I wanted to discuss about adding to if we could for the resolution.
Okay, with everybody will, we'll pull that off and.
Item F.
What?
Item F.
Yep.
Item F.
Item.
Item F, oh. Come on there.
My hair is going away.
He's a quick one. Okay, so I put that on council business. We'll bring that back. Okay, and that said, uh, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda, agenda after removing item F.
Okay, I'm moving into council business.
Moving into council business.
Second.
I have a first and second. All those, they were say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next we have department and committee reports. Uh, we'll start off on this side. Do any of you have your committees or, or anything you want to speak on? Oh. Mike?
I wasn't able to make it to my committee meeting. Um, I don't have an update on that yet.
All right, that's fine. Cool.
I, I won't take it all.
Oh, you're fine.
So we, we actually made it both to the, to the, um, DEIC meeting. Made by accident, but I got there. I, I, the email, I didn't see the email that told me the day it was, but I always happened to be there. So it worked out well. Um, so the only thing I'm going to mention, and I'll let you mention the rest, is, uh, they're working on a, uh, on a community contact sheet. Um, adding as many like nonprofits and community groups and contact points that they can for different organizations in there. I think every community, I mean, every committee member was asked to add what they can to it and then, um, it's going to be compiled and. I think we're going to try to share it online somehow or something along those lines. So, um, I think we're also going to see if any of the council members also had any to add, reach out to Elena. And she can give you the list or add some to the list if maybe so.
Yeah, thank you, Joel. Uh, Jerry?
Yeah, um, so the downtown Estacada committee, uh, that, and, uh, they made these, they're making these, uh, wonderful door hangers and they're going to be going out and, uh, hanging them on doors, just the old school. Door hangers that are going to be glossy. I've got, um, the printed copies I was going to share with everybody just so you could see what it is, but it's a, it's a great idea. Just another way to get information out into the community, um, non digitally, just get, get it out in people's, you know, in, in people's, uh, you know, in, in their face, get it out there so that they can. So I'll share these, uh, start passing, you know, look it over, pass it down and I'm going to share it also with the.
Are they looking for volunteers to hang them?
Um, I'm sure they will. Uh, Hannah Smith and Bennett Johnson would be the contact people to, uh, talk to on that. But, uh, it's a, um. I just thought it was a, you know, in, in the day of, the day that we're in where everything's done on the internet. Uh, you know, just seeing something like that. They're also going to put it, they're also going to have it in the, um, the newspaper, the, at least the side with the information on it will be in the paper. And then they're going to give the, at, at least they're considering giving an opportunity to local businesses to buy advertising space on the backside of that flyer. Um, which was, uh, I thought was also a good idea and a good way to fund the, you know, a good way to fund the project, but, um. It's just, it, like I said, it's, it's exciting to see, you know, to see a, a, a committee that is putting that much effort in, you know, put, they're, they're really seem to be doing a great job and they're. Seem to be going in the right direction as far as the downtown, um, is concerned and it's, uh, um, it's really good. Um. What else did we talk about? Oh, they, they've got an ongoing newsletter that, you know, an e-newsletter that they put out and then they also, um, every once a month they put, they, they put an article in the, or they submit an article to the newspaper. Um, which is also good. And then, uh, uh, the Arts Commission also met. Um, it was really excited, exciting to see. A full committee. Um. It, it's been a while since I've, you know, as a, as a liaison to sit on a full committee, you know, where everybody, you know, everybody was there, everybody was, uh. Um, actively participating. Um, it, it's really good. There's a lot of, a lot of really big events coming up for the Art, Arts Commission. Um, it's going to be exciting. It's going to be a great summer for them, um, with a, a lot going on and, uh, the addition of the new committee members. Um, they just seem to be, it's re-energizing that committee and the, and Estacada needs that. So that's all I got.
Great. Hey.
I'm good.
Okay.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me, okay.
Mayor.
Yeah.
One more quick thing. If anyone's available to step in on Tuesday evenings for the traffic and public safety committee meeting for the next through July. I'm helping out with coaching baseball and so I'm not going to be available on Tuesday nights.
I'm there anyways. I'll just pick it up for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'll be back after that.
All right. Yeah, I love it when it fixes itself and I don't have to.
There every time anyways.
All right, so let's get the city managers report.
Okay, I just wanted to chat with you for a few minutes and kind of get some feedback. Um. And so first of all, I had sent a message to you about a dais that would be potentially available. Um. And so I was just kind of wanting to get some more feedback on how, how we might want to proceed with that because it's not like it's designed. This one would be one that was in another city. So it's not specifically designed for this space, but it would, it seems like it would fit pretty well. Um, it's not a, it's not like up off the ground. It would be on this, on this level, but I just thought if anybody wants to go see it or, um. I just kind of thought I'd get some feedback because I'm all for like, um, reduce, reuse, recycle and all that kind of stuff. But I also wanted to make sure that it would be something that the council would be, you know, would enjoy, uh, working out of. So.
And I think by looking at your picture, that's a smaller room.
Hmm.
I think if, if it can be expanded, you know, to fit a room our size, I think it would be a great way to go and price. I mean, if we're talking, you know, a low price, I mean, we're game, but if they're looking to get a couple, you know, a thousand or more out of it. We might look into building our own at that point. Um, it's my, my thought on it, but I don't know. How do you, how do you all feel?
I like the special beach. I'm sorry. She raises hand.
Right, Jerry?
Well, I, I really like the idea that it doesn't, it doesn't raise us up, you know, it doesn't raise us up above, you know, above the, the people that we serve. Um, I like that idea that it's down, it's down on the ground and, you know, we're, we're not sitting up here looking down on everybody because that's not what we're here for. So. Uh, just the first thing that came to my, my mind. I really like that concept.
Um, from the pictures that looked, I mean, it looked really nice. Did, could, I couldn't really tell, but how many people did it look like it would accommodate?
It would fit the seven of you and then a couple of staff on one side on the, the part that looks more like a table. And then on the far side, you, I think it was two or three other like guest speakers or whoever might be joining would be on. But we could also rearrange it. So at their place, the mayor sits in the middle and because their room is more condensed like this. Um, and so if we had the mayor sitting, you know, in the corner and we could kind of, um, modify, modify that usage. Yeah. So it should fit like ten, like twelve people around it.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, Joel?
I, I know it had a very special feature that I, I absolutely love. So if we could get that one, that'd be kind of cool.
Okay.
So.
Makes it a little heavy, but it's.
I, I, I won't give it away. They can find out what it is later.
Yeah.
All right. Well, and Paul?
You, you might have touched on it in the email, but this, this is kind of a multi-purpose room. How easy is it to move stuff around and?
It's pretty heavy. Once this is in place, we probably wouldn't be moving it. But also it might be more self-contained, whereas we are continually moving tables around and we got cords going everywhere. And so if that was, if it was stable at one end, we could still use the other end, but it wouldn't be like we could pick it up and push it all in one corner. It, once it's in place, it's pretty, it's, yeah. Which is the good news, bad news. It's nice to have it where you're not rearranging things all the time. Um, but also there's a lot of good things that happen in this room that it's nice to be able to get the tables out of the way. So, but it's. You know, I think, I was trying to think of like the cost of, if we built our own. And I, that could be twenty thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm not really sure. I just know whenever you build anything out of wood and it's handcrafted that it would. Be kind of spendy and this one would be, we could see if we like it and if we want to modify, you know, build a, a different one someday, we could do that, but, um, find out how you like the, more of a. Permanent dais. So I could pursue it and see how, where it goes and keep you guys posted.
Yeah, sure.
That, that twenty thousand dollar cost probably doesn't include that special feature that. That, that twenty thousand dollar cost probably doesn't include that special feature that Joel.
It probably doesn't. So, okay, all right, I will, I will continue to pursue that then, okay, and then secondly, a tourism strategy, so as we're developing the budget for next year, we're looking for, or I'm looking for some further direction from council on goals related to a tourism strategy. Last year, we funded twenty five thousand dollars to, but for the Chamber of Commerce to do their visitor center and run their tourism program, which then we heard about at your last, I guess it was the last meeting. When Mount Hood Territory came with Jim and Lizzie and they kind of reported on the kind of things they work on, what they look at, how they've been working with Christina through the chamber and and so I guess what are your thoughts on that level of funding? I was thinking of, my plan was to bring it back down to, because we had really bumped it up once COVID, COVID and fires and all that. We really bumped up our tourism work through funding. And so I was ready to bring it back down, but then hearing all the good work that goes on in the whole, like we're funding it through the chamber. But that's in connection then with regional tourism, and so I just am wondering, what's the council, could you give us any more direction on how you'd like us to prepare the budget for that? If we're ready to taper back off, or if we want to keep push, pushing forward that, we couldn't I know we had talked about like possibly bringing it in-house at some point, but even a part-time staff position would cost more than just the, what we've been contracting out, so.
How much outside contracting, what we have to do, we have Mara in there working kind of in that direction already with the community, is she kind of in that?
She's doing like local work with businesses with the DEC, our Main Street program. And so it's, if that's more localized and like what the DEC is doing outreach to our specific community with the flyer, the door hanger flyer things and so we have like that going on here, we just don't have connections right now, which we do have connections, Elena's great at it, and so we could, we'd do some, we just wouldn't be as focused necessarily as if we contracted up to somebody who does that specifically, but.
Yeah.
What, have you looked into what other cities have been putting towards a chamber, like what maybe cities that are around our size, I mean, I know Malala's a little bigger.
That's a good question. I don't know how much they do, or if they just do their transient lodging tax, and that's whatever that is, it is, and that's what they use to promote. I could check on that too.
Yeah, because going from like twenty-five down, back down to ten, and I mean, I, I understand, you know, but I'm just, I'm just curious what other cities have been doing and where they've been sitting.
Okay.
So. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Joel.
Whatever, it's Monday. So a couple of things, first one is I think you mentioned we have someone that's already kind of working that way, so we could possibly look at having Mara pick up on part of that, but then leverage some of our committees or one of our committees like DEC or something like that to pick up some of that as well, help with the, with the, in keeping it in-house, lying that money to go further, I think would go further if it's not being used specifically, because if we send it to the chamber, they got to use it to pay part of the salary for somebody. Whereas if we use it directly for tourism, twenty-five thousand dollars is going to go a lot further.
Like for advertising?
Advertising, or whether, whatever, working with some of the, the regional and the the state tourism boards and, you know, we can just basically, advertising is a big thing, paying to get events done, paying to get stuff inside of newspapers. Putting it out on, on Facebook, which is a big one, or other social media. We can put that a lot more, we can probably double what we've been doing by not putting it out, having to pay someone salary, because we're already paying salaries, leveraging our committees and someone we already have on staff are going to get a lot further with that money. So, or we can even reduce the money and still get the same without, without losing any, so.
I would say that our Community Development Director, our Community Development Coordinator, which is Mara's position, is not likely to be able to take on that role to, other than like the local stuff, she's, she might grow into that. But right now with the, what they're handling in that department, it would be, it'd be minimal, but you know, we would do we, we could do some, we just can't take on a whole, the whole program, so.
Cool.
From a, a funding standpoint, I, I am kind of hearing from folks that, no one's talking about lowering the amount, so I, I think maybe the consensus might be to keep it where it's at. I'd like to see it kept where it's at, there's, there's always a reason to keep it going, I mean, we're going to be doing Main Street here. It'd be nice to have tourism dollars to help get people back down here, we're still recovering from fires, still trying to get people out here as well too, so I'd like to see the dollars stay. I, I think if we were to take it to staff or have the committees do it, I'd want to hear from the staff and the committees to see if they, if they've got time, if there's interest in doing that. Right now it seems like with what the chamber is doing with it, it seems to me like they're doing a good job, I see stuff that they put out on social media quite a bit, so to me it's working already, maybe this is something we could transition into at some point down the line, but from my standpoint, things seem to be working fine and and the dollar amount is, is still a good dollar amount.
Okay.
And, and I'd like to speak on this before we go further. I've been around a while, so we had tourism originally, in-house. And it worked very well. And we had a way to hand that money out to people who were adding to our tourism. In the city, we had a council, they'd come before us, they'd, they'd put forth their, their efforts and what they're doing in our city, and we could hand it out that way to increase events and things around town. Which was better because we had more stuff going out there, there was another avenue for these groups that are gathering, let's say the lavender festival, good tourism drop. Now, if we'd had the council we had back then, we could have just issued some of that money towards lavender festival. And they would have had something to work with. And that's what the benefit of having it in-house versus chamber. Chamber is a members-only group, okay, they serve their members. They do do the tourism on the side of that, but really at the end of the day, they're driven by members only. Whereas the city, we are not. It's the whole city. Anybody in it, all the events around it. So it gives us a little more advantage when it comes time to distribute that money that we're talking about. To get it in the places that will increase tourism severely. Because I used to use it for, I remember back in the day, Fourth of July, we had summer celebration came in, all the things that added to our tourism in our downtown court. So it was very effective. So I would hope that we would look at that, because that's the thing we're missing now, if you look around, the events are almost nil. I mean, we, the Fourth of July is gone, the Timber Festival is gone, all these events that money was a major factor, tourism money. We used to use it back in the day. And I just think we ought to look at that again, because I think it would help us get those events back up and running. So we can attract people in here, so before we sign off on that, let's, let's really consider this, because twenty-five thousand is not a small amount of change. And if we do this right, I, I could see it really bringing back some of these events that we're missing. And bringing back tourism.
So like a grant program?
A grant program, exactly.
And, and that's what we used to have, right, it was, I remember Bennett Johnson, Ken and Bennett were leading that up, I was part of that committee.
Well, they were on one of them, but we had several different committees, every year they'd pick new people to be on the committee, and we would distribute, they'd come in, all the applicants with their requests, we'd ask them, does it help tourism, how does it help tourism? What do you think? How many people does it bring, do you think, or if the, some of them had counts, so they could bring us counts. And then we would distribute the money based upon that, and at the end of the year, it really helped them out and helped us out to get people in our area for these events, so.
So what, what happened that we aren't doing that anymore and it went to?
Well, now, the chamber is getting it, but they use it for advertisement and then to pay one salaried person that they have, who she does all the work for that. But it, it, the advertisement's good, but if you're paying it out to employ somebody, you're losing the effectiveness of it, because that's not what tourism is really all about. When I used to be on the county tourism board, we used to hand it out to different things, the fair, the, you know, everything that brought people in. And I think we need to get back to that, if we're going to really be effective with tourism dollars. I think we need to focus on that. And I think having the city be a part of that is a major part of it.
Jerry's the way.
Sure.
So the budget has to be in by next month, is that correct? Okay, so a, a, at this point, I don't think that one month, one month is going to get us to where we need to be. So I, I, I'm in agreement with Paul that for this year, we continue with the chamber. And then, you know, again, then we transition to bringing it in-house, but I, I, I don't think a month is going to get us where we need to be as far as staffing goes and, you know, where, where are we going to put the funds? So I, I, I'm, I'd, like I said, I'm in agreement with Paul that we keep it with the chamber for this year and we look towards transitioning it in-house, you know, over the next, over the next year, the next budget year.
Then Joel?
I, I have a hybrid approach to that idea, so I really like the idea of being able to fund stuff, like for example, the lavender festival, things like that, that could be a huge shot. But I also understand there's a transition period, we need to build out a program. So the hybrid approach would be, we split it at some point, as far as what's available there, we give some to the chamber to continue working on the social media advertising aspect. We, we keep a reserve of that amount available for events happening this year. And then as it's going on for the next year, we can try to, it gives us a year to actually build an actual program focusing on the advertising and things like that for next year, but we saw the money available for events this year, we can look at distributing for this, this budget cycle. And the events between next month and whenever the next budget cycle, as it leaves us some money available to do that, you can push out to give out to the events, if you give it all to the chamber, we lose that ability completely. For example, we couldn't help the lavender festival, but if we do the hybrid approach, we can at least kick some money to that, any other events happening this summer. Anything happening in the winter, Fourth of July parade, whatever it is. We can, we can do both, basically, and then we still get some of the benefits of having the the chamber do on their social media, but then next year, what we can look at, what that is, is to consider using that money for either having somebody directly do the social media or find a company that, that's a professional social media company or advertising company that that money's handed off to. That that's all they do is just advertising for cities or businesses or whatever else. That's just an idea on that, of course, we can adjust it, but the hybrid approach at least gives us the ability to have the flexibility and fund those events this year, this budget cycle.
Okay, in bales?
I like the idea of the hybrid approach. What, so it was ten thousand prior? And then it was twenty-five thousand last year, the last couple of years trying to encourage tourism? And you're, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what your plan was before you came for guidance, was to be tapering it back down? Anyways?
My plan was to, from discussions we'd had before, was just to drop that back down to ten thousand. And then see where we wanted to go the next year, and then, but my concern was then after I thought about that was are they able to do, like if they only have ten thousand dollars, are they able to do anything? Like sometimes you, you, you hit that critical mass where like, okay, now, I guess critical mass in reverse, where we've gone too low, now the whole program implodes, and I didn't want to do that to the tourism program, but I was also feeling like I wasn't sure that I want the, the budget to be supported when I put it together and bring it, and so we could look at putting a grant program together again, and then it's events that, it might be too late for this year though, if they're happening in the summer, they might need to it might be like, we'd run the grant program starting in January or something, for people to, who are going to be doing events in twenty twenty-four. To get their like promotional materials or, but I'm not, I'm not sure what other kind of like, it seemed like it was Foster Farm was doing, they, they would do I'm not sure what they did with their funds, and then there was a bicycle map, I remember that. Different programs like that, that were trying to draw people to the area. We're applying for those grant funds, I'm not sure if that was what you remember, but.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm remembering, things like that, and then the Big Bang was another one that put in for it as well too. It just, yeah, little things around, but you know, we, we, we talk about some of the events going on now and most of those are city-funded. Already through the DEC. So, so they've got, they've got the funds there to make things happen, so I'm not sure, I, I, I still think it's something we can ease into over time. I, I would like to know or, or get a feel for what kind of events, if we set some money aside, what kind of events would, would benefit from that.
And how would they be able to use that to promote?
Right, yeah, I, I, I think it's a good idea, but I'd be worried about things imploding as well too, if we're just splitting it in half or proportionately. Then you've got two funding sources that may not get the work done.
Right. Hmm.
Well, you need a vote or what do you?
I don't, I don't, I was hoping like there would be like a lightbulb moment, and we'd say, let's do this.
I've got one more quick question for Joel. Was what you were recommending to go from twenty-five to seventeen-five and then seventy-five hundred, or what was the numbers you were thinking for the? Fifteen, ten?
Yeah, fifteen towards the chamber, ten towards, towards events, because obviously there won't be as many events we can do this year. And next year we may have to flip that around if they find out those more events for the year. But, but you're right, it'll take a few months to kind of get something in place, get the applications in and then have some sort of, maybe the council has to decide, or the DEC has to decide what does happen, or you can figure that, that piece out later. We decide, but there's late summer or winter and then early spring events that could probably fall in that timeframe. You know, giving it, they say three months for maybe four at most to get things done. Just starting summer, we're only three, four months in. To nine to four months in fully to the, to the year, there's still lots of things that can happen, have the money distributed and everything else, so. I think a fifteen, ten split was my, was what I was thinking when I said that, because that gives us a chance. I think the lavender festival is at the, it's at the end of summer, is that?
Two.
To, now maybe a little, maybe a little too soon on that one, but there's other things that happened, what, what's the late one we always do in August, so I'd figure what it was.
Summer celebration?
Is it summer? No.
Harvest festival? Like the harvest?
Well, is that?
October festival or something? The Harvest Festival?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Harvest Festival, sorry.
And there, there's not going to be a Harvest Festival this year, it's going to be October.
And again, that's city.
Nonetheless, it's city-funded, but I mean, if we put some of that money towards the DEC, they can do more advertising for it.
And this would be in addition to the community community group funding that.
Yeah.
For our specific events, people could, you know, request.
I think the hybrid approach sounds really good, I like that.
What, what if we took it and went twenty-five? Twenty to tourism already, and then we got that five for, for the hybrid piece, that would at least, that, that would keep it from imploding. But that would also give five thousand, that would, would allow us to, yeah, to test, test the waters and see what's out there, what's available.
That concerns me about the imploding piece, we keep talking about, that you'd be implying that for twenty thousand dollars, they couldn't get advertising out. See, my concern is not about their, their person that has to have a salary for it. My concern is that twenty thousand dollars going towards what the city directs it to be, and that's advertising. If they need to balance their stuff out to pay somebody, that's on them, but the city can't specifically worry about someone's salary, their, their concern is this is our directive that we're doing, that has, this money has to go towards and come out with this results on it. However they do, that's on them. But what I'm saying is if you're saying ten thousand dollars, you can't get it done, that means it's all going towards salary and not out to advertising. So you can see my concern with that one is fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money for advertising for a short period and still having, having it out.
Well, I, I think part of the problem here is we've never established a, any measurements or any goals of, of what, what is success with our tourism plan either, we're, we're talking, it's a lot of money for this or for that, but do we know? Is it a lot of money? What are we looking to get out of it? How many hits? How many, how many social media posts are we looking to get? It seems like it'd be good to have something like that established as well, we, we talked about a tourism plan. Getting something in place. I think this could be the start of getting something more concrete in place for the city as well too.
To, and I think the other part is, two years ago, they're getting it done for less, they're getting them for fifteen or less. I don't, you know, I, I think they should still better get done for fifteen, and like I said, five thousand dollars for events is not a lot to get out to events, trying to get them, because most of the money is probably going to go towards advertising. And those events is to get a notice, five thousand dollars for, that may get a couple of events total for the next six, eight months.
I really like the fifteen, ten theory, that really worked well.
Why, 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 why are we, why do we have to stick with that twenty-five thousand dollar? It seems like everything else in our budget, everything else in our budget has gone up, is going up year over year. Why couldn't we put another five thousand dollars into that and just do twenty and ten? I mean, it's just, you know, I, I don't see a problem, you know, doing that, I don't want to take away an opportunity by not, you know, by not funding the, you know, the chamber this year when we don't really have a plan in place. I say, you know, like I said, I mean, I Um, I say, you know, like I said, I mean, I. Why not add another five thousand and do twenty and ten, just so we're not, just so we know we're not taking away that opportunity? You know, with what the chamber has already done, what the chamber's done over the past couple of years has been, it's, it's been outstanding. Um, I think they've done a really good job. They brought a lot of attention to S, to the city of Estacada. Um, and uh, you know, adding another five thousand dollars to that goal that gives us ten thousand dollars to spend over. You know, probably realistically after putting something in, you know, putting a plan in place and getting it all. You know, ten thousand dollars over probably eight months. Um, I think is, is reasonable.
Um, I actually got two questions. One's going to be is, is the additional five thousand dollars even budgetable? That's the first question. Second question is, I recall that earlier, um, when we, we've gone over this, the money out for. Both the chamber and for the um. For the community center, we required, it wasn't supposed to specifically go just to the chamber. It was supposed to go for. Tourism, anyone that wanted to apply for that grant. And that's what we actually set forth with the, as a council. As a program for that, and, and we're supposed to be an application process for that. So I guess my other question would be is. Has a chamber even applied for a grant? On that behalf of the city through that process that we set up earlier, like a year ago.
Hmm, and you talked about having to set up that, and I have not set up that program yet where multiple. Um, entities could apply for that grant, so I don't really have that in place. And I believe that it would be budgetable to expand that to. Twenty and ten, if you wanted to. I think what I'm hearing here is that tourism is still a priority, and that I think was my biggest concern is. Is this a priority even for the council? And I think what I'm hearing is that tourism is a. Um, it is a priority and that I need to put together. Um, a program for how that can go forward best for the, for the city. Um, and I can check into like doing a hybrid program, starting a, a, a grant program. Um, and like you said, establishing the criteria for what, what, how do we know we're having success with tourism? Um, and then. Have an application process. Although I don't know, um, like there might be, yeah, who, who has those contacts in place already to be. Um, effective with the.
One of the things in the application that we said we wanted was. They had to list out exactly how and what they're going to be using the money for to show the results. We can have a measurable results to hold them accountable to. That was part of the, the grant process for the tourism was what we requested, so.
Any other questions on that? So you got direction.
Yeah, I think I.
We'll start focusing in that direction.
I have a good direction to go now, so I appreciate that. Okay.
Great.
Thank you. And that is, I think that's all I'm gonna. Um, talk about this evening. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, council business, we have uh, traffic and public safety committee appointments. I think we're all good with the recommendation of the traffic safety. Is anybody?
Sorry, which one did they recommend? I didn't see that.
Uh, they recommended Heath Sedgeburg.
The other one, I understand didn't show up.
She was not present at the meeting. Um, there was really no reason that she was disqualified or anything like that. It's just that they were able to. Visit with Heath a little bit and. You know, find out, just how he was able to introduce himself and being present, I think was a good indicator of his interest, so.
Everybody good with that then? All right.
Do we need a motion for that?
And then we put uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash, what was it? Zero, one, zero. Uh, back on there on council business. So the fees.
Um, I just wanted to add one thing to the resolution and I'm not exactly sure how to word it. Um, and that would be a, a whereas, um, and that would be. Uh, basically something that identifies that. Uh, if we, as, as the council. Determine that either a fee or something on the fee schedule should be either. Reduced or removed for people within the city limits. That that would be um, something that we can do. And I basically wanted to put it on the resolution because it sets a precedence. So at any point going forward, we can, we basically fall back to that and say, yeah, you know. This particular fee is something that I think the city is, the residents have already paying for. Through staff time or whatever and their taxes. We don't want to be charging them an additional fee for this, but if they're outside the city, they should pay it or something, but. If we don't have that, it's, it's something that we don't really set the precedence for. If we choose to do so, it would. It's something we can already kind of set the grounds for. And if the staff identifies something that fits their well, too, we've already made a motion that says, yeah. We want to do something like that as part of the resolution. It just basically gives us more options and it makes it more resolute to give us that option, so.
So you're, you're saying in one of the whereas is?
Yeah.
Just say, so we could say whereas, add a whereas, it says this, whereas the city council may from time to time. Reduce fees for city residents.
Reduce or eliminate.
Or reduce or waive. Are you typing this? No, I'm just writing it. Okay, whereas the city council may. At their discretion.
Waive or reduce.
Wave or reduce. Fees on the fee schedule for city residents.
Yeah.
Sorry, is that, would this be for, uh, reducing an individual? Fee like on a one-time basis for a certain applicant, or would this be? Um, amending the fee schedule to. Remove that fee or to change it to a fee that is waived if you're. A city resident.
It, it would be, I guess, depend on what the fee is, but more, I was thinking in my mind, it's more amend the fee schedule. To remove a fee or waive it if you're, you have an address within the city that. You know, you live within the city, you don't have to pay.
Are you thinking if, if like a fee is like, if you're like doubled up on it, so if you're being charged by the city, but then you're also being charged.
Yeah, exactly. I'm, like I said, I'm all about trying to not overtax the citizens, and a fee is a tax. That's what it is. If you can call it a fee, but it's another tax.
It's, yeah, it's a way that we.
So I'm just trying to find ways to give us the, the flexibility to. Uh, if we see a way that fits as a council together to relieve that burden where we can, so.
I guess in theory, it seems like a good idea. I am, I'm trying to think of when it would really be applicable, though. What? What has come up that has caused this? Um, and before we throw something like this in, my wheels are turning, trying to figure out the why behind.
I got a couple ideas.
Um, and, and then from a staff standpoint, is this something that, that would be easy to work in? Kind of wish Peter was here to hear if this would be normal and customary for a city to do something like this. I'd like to hear really from, from. Uh, a legal standpoint, if this is something that we should be doing. I, I, and I, I hear you. I, I believe you.
We're going to bring legal in every time at a meeting now.
Um, Peter does apologize for not being here. He had scheduled this vaca, he's on vacation and he had scheduled this. Vacation prior to committing to be at all of our meetings. So ordinarily, he would be, and he could weigh in very easily on something like this. Um, and we could bring it back next time if, if we want to. Um, I was reading up on it also and I just. Um, so the city does need to present a balanced budget. So that means that there are, we do receive property taxes. The property taxes are up to about one point two million dollars. Um, and so that, that covers a variety of things. However, there are a lot of fees for service that the city charges. Um, for instance, the developers, or if you're getting a building permit, or if you're doing that kind of land use application, or if you're doing. Um, if you come in and get a um, notary, there's a small fee for that. And so I think, you know, there, there are ways that the city. Charges fees for service in order to be able to provide all the services that we do. Um, I was reading however, that some cities, they'll rely heavily on fine, fees or fines. Um, and those typically tend to impact are the more vulnerable or marginalized um. Community members that maybe don't, you may be different socioeconomic level or. Um, you know, through code enforcement or the, and I thought that was kind of surprising when I was reading that was on National League of Cities. Um, and so that's not a standard operating procedure for here by any means. I, and I don't think that we. Um, have fees that are. Prohibitive for people coming to get services. But I mean, we, if we want to, we could look into this, whereas the, the city council. May at their discretion amend the fee schedule to waiver or reduce fees for um. City residents. Or city residents, and we could bring that, you know, I could bring that back.
Is it, is it a bit, the council has the power to amend the fee schedule. Upon voting to amend it. Um, as much as, you know. Without doing anything, so there are certain statutes related to certain types of fees, but anything that's legal, you can. Amend the fee schedule as you decide. So it kind of sounds like it would be. Sort of redundant or reiterative, which is fine, but you would be adding. Sort of a, it's not really a decision necessarily, but it's a statement that you'd be adding into this resolution, kind of just sending the message that. Hey, the council recognizes that it might be appropriate in the future to reduce some fees or remove them. Um, but it would, it wouldn't be changing a power that you already have.
That's correct.
I, I get that. I mean, the same could be said of what's already said on there as well. Like I said, it's just setting a precedence. It's just, it basically puts in the writing that that's an attempt we may look at. It's there, it's resolute. That's why I'm asking for something in there to establish that. So there's never, there's no question going forward on just as much as you'd say. City wishes to determine recover costs from providing city cer, city services. That's an obvious one, too, that could technically be redundant because that's. Kind of goes without saying. So it just puts it something in resolute in writing, allows us to fall back on it. We can see it, the citizens can see it. And that's what it's there for. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm all for considering it, would love to hear back.
Alright, so I can check in that and bring it back next time? Okay. Were there any other questions on that? On that, um, the recommendation for that?
Is, hey, sorry, for the, is this, um. Is the fee schedule then being postponed until next time?
Yeah, because we needed to.
Because that's going to affect our um, Acela e-permitting, that tech fee. We.
Reminding me of that.
Would really like to start collecting that if we're using this Acela system.
We can uh, put it into play and then amend it. If we should need to, is that right? That's what I'm hearing here.
If it's fine with legal issue, we could.
Or we can adopt the fee schedule and then consider the language.
Oh, we have to. Resolution for it, so. Uh, I can make it simple. Um, you, what do you craft it, right? What you would write on there?
I would, but I don't know if everybody's in agreement with doing it without, I mean. Without um. Having legal counsel.
I'll, I'll make it simple. I, I moved to approve the fee schedule with the amended whereas added to it. So.
Good. So, is that going to work, Taylor?
Well, is there a second? If there, if there's a second. If we want to approve it with the whereas, that would, we'd need a second and a vote, or if, if people aren't comfortable with the whereas, then we could. Approve it. Without it.
Is there a way to bring it back next, like approve the fee schedule, but bring it back? And if we, and then. Can amend the wording and, and add the whereas or?
Yeah, could we, if, would, would people be comfortable with that? So just adopt this fee schedule as it is. And then at your next meeting, we bring back. Another one that adds in that. Was it just one whereas? Yeah.
Yes, just one whereas.
All right, let's do that.
There's a motion on the table.
So we'd want that one to fail.
We'll just let that one die.
If that's all right, I guess just.
Uh, uh, if, if that's where he's at, I'll just make it easy, withdraw the motion. So, is, is that where everybody's at or what? I mean.
I'm a little bit confused by it all. It's, it sounds like. That we have the power to amend it at any time.
Yeah.
And it, what would cause the situation where we would need that?
The, the one thing that really.
Would it, like if they changed? The powers of the council to be able to amend the fee schedule?
It's, like you said, it's just making, it's more of a, of a statement to Donnie, just it's as much as, as much as in writing here. It's for the people to see that that's what we're doing. It's to say that we might consider it at one point and just puts it in there. So. Any question to it is taken out of, at a future point. One of the things that got me concerned with on here that, that maybe even think about in the first place. Is the library was adopted into here at some point. The thing that I had concern with at, at one point is they wanting to charge. For the room that they just paid three and a half million dollars to put into the whole park area. They wanted, they want to charge for their room. And so I'd like as the council, you know, on the fee schedule to make sure it's clear that we have the right to at some point if the council decides. To say, hey, yeah, if you're in the city, you don't have to pay for that.
Where, where does it?
It's, it's a highlighted yellow down in the fee schedule, just above overdue fines.
Yeah, it's not on this particular, there's no fee for.
Yeah, it's, I'm just saying, it's, it's coming up in the future. So I'm just setting the ground for it. So if we all in agreement when that comes up, we can say, hey, if we put in the resolution, we're willing to consider this. It's come up as a free this year, like, you know, and we can use, we can say, hey, it's council wanted to waive it. It just basically sets the ground. That's all I'm doing to set the ground for it. And versus, yes, the power of the council has the ability to do that. We have a lot of other things we have the power to do as well. Uh, but like I said, just as much as everything else says, whereas in this resolution, it just stating it in the resolution that. We're, we're willing to consider it, willing to put it in there. It's, if it's, if we already have the power, I don't see why we're legally concerned. About the, about putting that, that in there as well, so. But it's, it's really up to everybody else. It's just my ideas and how I see it. I'd like to be clear about things sometimes.
I'm okay with the language as long as it's not a legal issue. As long as there's no problem caused by a legal issue and it, I'm more concerned with. Them onboarding the program and not being able to collect the technology fee. For the new Excel, because I know it's a, a lot of work bringing that on board. So I'm fine with the language as long as it's not a legal, if, if Peter says it's a legal issue and we. Would amend it at the next meeting to remove it. I'm okay with it. I'd second it.
So he seconded it? Is that right? So you withdrew, you withdrew the motion.
I'm sorry, I can't withdraw. I never actually fully withdrew. I, I was saying if everybody's in agreement, so.
Uh, all right, all right. So can we continue with the motion?
Yeah, so Joel, so councillor like he's making the motion to. Approve the.
The whereas.
With the whereas, whereas the city council may at their discretion. Amend the fee schedule to waiver or reduce fees for city residents.
I second. So we have first and second, all those in favor. Well, you want to do a roll call? Might make it easier.
Uh, councillor Hughes. No. Councillor Littkey.
Yes.
Councillor McElroy.
Yes.
Councillor Prokop.
No.
Councillor Strobel.
No.
Councillor Ten Bush.
No.
Mayor Drinkling.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Make a motion to pass the resolution as written.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Now the first and second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion passes.
And that is to bring it back next time, correct? If, once they do the.
No.
No.
That was just the passive as written.
That's just the passive as.
We'd like to direct staff to bring it back.
Okay, yeah.
Amended, we could do that.
Okay. After, okay, yes.
Okay. Now, we are at the next citizen and community group comment. I have Brandy Littkey.
Sorry, guys, I just had surgery, so bear with me here. Um, I just had a quick comment. Um. I was going through the uh, packet tonight and I noticed that there's discrepancies in when people run for a committee. On a couple of the committees, there was information redacted, and then another committee, their information was not redacted. So I didn't know if there was a reason for that, if we could just make it even across the board. It seemed kind of weird that you would have it for some committees and not the other. And that was just all I have to say. So, thank you.
Can I say something to that? Um, it's a, uh, the question is asked of the applicant. Um, whether they want their information shared or not. Um, so it's completely up to the, that particular applicant, whether that information is redacted or. Or shared.
Okay, so it's not the city deciding it, it's the applicant themselves?
And. I don't have any more in front of me, so we're moving on to the mayor council reports and comments. I will start off.
I appreciate everyone coming out tonight and. The shorter meeting was nice. Um, hope everyone had a happy Easter and I don't, I don't have much else other than that.
Nothing further from me. I appreciate the input on the uh, work staff did and the input and discussion tonight as well, too, and folks coming out and presenting as well.
Uh, thank you everybody for coming out. Thank you staff. Uh, looking forward to uh, everybody buzzing about Estacada being a B city, so.
I, I thought it was great, Merrick coming out um, tonight. Um, the. Once I, once I saw that the license plate was designed by an Estacada resident and then figuring out who that resident was. Uh, it, it's exciting and uh. It's exciting. And I really, I really like the fact that we're jumping on board with this B city USA. I think it's going to be a great thing. I think it'll be a lot of fun. Thank you, staff. Amazing work as always, and thank you all for showing up. And everybody that's applying for these committees, it's. It's exciting to, you know, to see to see full committees, and it's been a little while, so it's good to see.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, staff, as always. The Arts Commission has Estacada Presents with Ant Farm that's happening this Thursday at the library. So I encourage people to come. It's at seven o'clock on Thursday. And then personally, I just want to encourage people to adopt a pet. I I recently, in the last three years, I adopted. A senior dog, and I had to put him to sleep today. So I just wanted to encourage everybody to spread your love with adopting an animal. Thanks.
That's sad. Thanks for coming out, everybody. Appreciate new community, well. New and older community members coming out and sharing what they want to do within the community. I'm excited to see the lavender event come back, so. Very much in support of that, as well as the bees. I know my husband would love to be a beekeeper in his retiring years, so we'll see if that happens. Appreciate all the Friday updates, Melanie and staff for putting everything together, and thanks, everybody, for a good discussion.
All right. And just a little kudos for the planning department, Taylor. I had a lunch with American Homes, who's building up there. I'm sure you know them pretty well. He said that the planning staff here is the best he's dealt with. You guys have been fast, efficient, and he's never seen it go that good. So I thought I would pass that on to your department. Since they did a great job. And staff, thank you very much for everything you do and all of you for being here. It's always interesting. But we thank all of you, and we thank the chief for being here as well. It's great to see you. And you guys have a nice night, huh?